...to do it with unencumbered funds and the attorney, Barbara Lohman, suggested they put it in a Warren article and they decided to not do that. This project has also changed numerous times. Just in the last month, I'm gonna take a guess and I think I'm gonna be lowballing it, there's been about three major changes just in the last 30 days. Can you imagine how many changes would exist in the next 365 days? That would bother me a lot. For all those reasons, I don't think, that's why I wouldn't vote for it. And I'd wanna vote for it very, very much. I really, I really do. Cause, you know, when I walk through that school, you know, I feel bad or sometimes as embarrassed as anybody that that school doesn't look, you know, almost like Prospect Mountain. But I can't give the $20 million to the school board.
And my problem is, I don't understand why we don't have a Warren article. Asking for four, five million dollars that could be put into that building and renovate part of that building at a time. With $10 million in that building, that building will look like the Taj Mahal. I mean, we don't need to go 20, 30 million dollars for these schools when we have a perfectly good building there that we can renovate for 5 million to 8 million dollars.
We've talked to the architect and that's the price we got from our nation. It's not all these 5 million, 10 million, 15 million that we're talking about.
You put 8, 10 million dollars into that building, that building will look like the Taj Mahal.
It might look like Taj Mahal, but it's not gonna make any sense or anything that has to be.
Cause it will.
You can say that sitting there, but we have gone through this. We've done all this, we've done due diligence, we've done it for years. If there was a 5 million dollar bid, we would've accepted it.
What's been the attendance rate of the school board to this buildings and grounds committee? Have you people, have the school board been going to all of the meetings of the buildings and grounds people?
Ask Steve Parker, he's a member of the building and grounds committee.
He hasn't been a school board member at all.
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
They just want, they just wanna spend it.
50%?
I'd say at least 50%.
You know what, I thought we were here to talk about the budget and not about the school board's attendance stuff.
Drop out of it.
Excuse me, but this is our meeting, this is...
Let me finish.
No, 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 no.
I'm part of this committee right now and I'm talking and I'd like to finish, please. And I gave you respect, well, you slandered the school board and you ran us into the ground and I'm sick to death of it. You know, you talk about lack of transparency about the telephone system, that's not going, that's gonna go out to bid. That wasn't, that's not coming out of end of year funds, it's coming out of an E-rate grant. Let's get the record straight. You know, you talk about, you know, there's no, there's no Plan B, there's all these other Warren articles for bathrooms, for windows, for many other things. You know, if this doesn't pass, we do have things we have to address, whether it's windows, roof, whatever. You know, there's all these other things we have to address. We do have a Plan B, we've had a Plan B for a while, but we've put off doing those things, doing due diligence, waiting for something like this to pass. I'm not gonna go head to head with every contractor or everybody who's in there, whether they're there to put a roof on the place or to put in heating and cooling. What I'm there to do, we hire a clerk of the works for that, we hire somebody who's competent to oversee it. That's what we do. If I'm there watching every nail being driven, that's not my job and as a board member, I'd be ashamed to be that micromanaging of anybody.
Well, you've just brought up the grounds over and the lawns over to the playfields over to the Prospect Mountain High School.
High school, the septic system.
That was because no school board members were involved in that project. Why are you shoveling off the roof? Because no school board members were watching when they were putting in the wrong roof rafters. Yes, you do have a...
1851?
I'm sorry, but you do have an obligation. If you're the school board member, the clerk of the works tells you there's problems.
Right.
It wasn't done over the Prospect Mountain High School.
Right.
Go dig up the clerk of the works. I spent three years over there because of the mess of nobody foreseeing that. You people are getting the money. It's not the clerk of the works, it's not gonna be Kathy Obelinas, it's not gonna be the superintendent. The school board is gonna have that money. You, I agree, you're not gonna watch every nail, but my gosh, you're gonna have to go in there and say, "I'm not approving this change order. I see the clerk of the works says this isn't right, it's gotta be straightened out." You do have an obligation when there's a project. You can't say it doesn't matter.
I never said it didn't matter.
And these people, wait a second now, I'll say something. These people that came up, put in their time for all of these meetings and I've heard you people hardly showed up. I feel sorry for these people that came up the other night and they've got passion about this. They've got a passion about this. I don't see it with the school board. I don't see any passion from you people. You didn't even show up for the first meeting.
Not until they get the budget.
The first meeting that we had about this, none of you showed up, none of the school board members come up.
The first meeting, wait a minute, the first budget meeting?
The first meeting when we went over the 18 million.
On the Warren article, 15th, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
A school board member showed up that day, she was late and she was ill.
She wasn't late, she said that she was not supposed to be there, she specifically in the minutes...
But she showed up, correct?
Where's the other four?
You know what?
Where were the other four?
That's not what we...
No passion?
Who was supposed to be there? Was she the one that was appointed to be there?
I am not gonna answer that, that's up to them to answer that, not up to me. That's not what we're here to discuss tonight, we're here to discuss the budget.
You want 5 million, you want $20 million and it's not an issue that you people don't show up for meetings, that you don't, can't logically present something...
I didn't say it wasn't, I didn't say it wasn't an issue.
Tonight, what did you people pull? You didn't even have your number ready. You didn't even have your number ready for this article and we're gonna give you 21 million dollars.
Cause we didn't have the final number from, from the insurance...
Because you didn't, you didn't do your job.
All right, now Barbara wants to speak.
I would just like to say that going back to in March of 2008, when there was a big splash in the newspaper that we were mandated to purchase land and I called the state and found out, no, we were not mandated. And that, that was the beginning and that's what really got me interested in what, and kinda got me going and everything and looking into things and I started attending meetings. Then there was the $30,000 that a subcommittee voted for inappropriately for an architect whose contract had run out and that became a big stink. And then the lawyer misinformed the public at last year's deliberative session and I came to a school board meeting and I asked for clarification to the public. I was promised that that was gonna be done, that was never done. And, you know, you sit here and say, "Well, we will hire, we will hire." No, the taxpayers will hire. The taxpayers are on the hook for this and I really, honestly, wholeheartedly do not believe the taxpayers can bear the burden of pay increases to the staff, all the technology and every line item that we've been through, that every single line item must have, cannot cut, cannot live without, and now this on top of it. There's no give and take, there's no compromise. And I honestly, honestly believe with the numbers of foreclosures, short sales, people who are in jeopardy of losing their homes, people who have lost their jobs, and don't forget, New Hampshire unemployment never, ever reflects, and the national unemployment levels never, ever reflect self-employed individuals who are not working. And New Hampshire has predominantly, the history of New Hampshire is small businessmen, self-employed people. So, are we getting an accurate picture of that? No. Because you know what, my husband's self-employed and I will tell you right now, everybody he knows is barely working and there have been major, major job losses in the state in the, in the industry. So, I don't believe that the, you know, and it's too many, too many issues of mistrust with the information. You know, this is said and then that is said and this is said and then you, and it's, and there's a level of anger when clarification is asked for. And I don't believe that should be. So, that's my personal, but really, I don't believe the taxpayers can bear the costs of, of everything as a whole.
You know, and that's, and if that's your belief or your, your point of view, that's, I, I respect that. But to go after the school board for certain things, attendance, I'm on nine committees and subcommittees this year. I get to as much stuff as I possibly can. Some nights, there's conflicts. When there is, I let the chair know, always. I get meeting minutes, I stay informed. I'm not able to be everywhere at once. This year, we had a lot of conflicts going on with negotiations with everything else. I mean, I, first night in December, first week in December, I had nine meetings in one week. I got to as much as I could, obviously, there's things you can't get to when you've got a week like that. You do the best you can, you know? But in addressing your concerns about, you know, the, the building and this plan we've got, you know, in a way, we have made a compromise. We wanted a new school originally, we looked at that, the Buildings and Grounds Committee looked at that. We've looked at land, we've looked at ways we could expand, we've worked hard to come up with something in the center of town based on input that we got. We wanted to renovate the school because it is in a good location in town. We're not looking for a new school, you know, we could, it would probably, you know, we could probably, you know, knock it down and, or go somewhere else and build, you know, but this is where we wanted to do it. This is based on input we've got. The first plan we got and the first numbers we got, we got a lot of feedback about it. We got into a Buildings and Grounds meeting and said, you know, there's, you know, $27 million, that's just way too much money, we can't wrap ourselves around it, we can't put that in front of the taxpayers. So, we come up with 18 million, we pare it down and this is what we bring forward. So, in some ways, we have compromised. We're still asking for renovation, but we've tried to make it more palatable. We've presented you with information about taxes, you know? Personally, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing where the Prospect bond is going to be paid off and that's an exciting thing. And I'm thankful for the oversight of the board that made that decision 10 years ago to do that. That, that was a great plan because now it opens up room for us to, to give something back to the Alton Central School and to do something for that.
I'd just like to clarify, when I was saying there's no room for compromise, I meant that when you look at the, not just the building and, you know, and that building has a long history of lack of maintenance. We all know it, we've all admitted it, it's there, it's, that's the elephant in the living room, whether we like it or not. And so, it's unfortunate because today, we're paying the price for past mistakes of, you know, past mistakes. But when I say compromise, you know, there's, in the, in the contract, there's no increase to the copay for health benefits. You know, there's no, there's no compromise and when you look at all the monies that are being spent, it's all must-have, Level 10, high priority, can't ever cut anything. In Christie's old words the other night, "You don't get it ever, get rid of anything that you've got, you always add to it." And that's, that's what we're seeing. Whether it's in a program, whether it's paying this one or staying current, whether, oh, the threat that staff will leave and will never maintain quality staff. In this economy, really? No. That's what I'm talking about, compromise.
Can't call a point in order from the crowd.
You can't misquote me, that's not fair.
Mr. Miller, did you hear that? From the crowd?
That's not what I said, so...
Can't call a point in order from out there.
No.
No, you can't. We'll look at the minutes and if they're wrong, we'll correct it, okay?
I'm sorry if I misquoted you. I'm just saying that there's no, there's no compromise in the whole thing. That was my interpretation of what you were saying because you were talking about the average school program. And you didn't wanna get rid of anything and you wanted to bring in new programs.
I've got a question. No, I've got a question. Now, there's no school aid, right? Or state school aid? Is there any prediction of when it might come back?
Right now, it's probably best to assume it's not going to.
Ever come back?
That's the avenue.
So, is there a lot of...
There is, excuse me, there is talk of the most needy situations where it's emergency or security issue with the, with the building itself. And that is gonna be very far and few in between and very scrutinized. I don't even know what the percentage would be on that, but in our district where we are, I don't believe...
Now, because there's no state aid, is there some state regulations that are enforced because we have to take state aid? If we took state aid, we'd have to do, but now that we're not getting state aid, we don't have to?
No, we still have to follow the educational rules. We still have to follow all those for size.
The, the state, the issue about state aid, if we were to get it under the way it is now, it's only for life safety issues. And I don't know if you're familiar with fire codes and things like that, we would be getting approximately, I think it was something like $30,000 if we were to even bother going for it at that point. It was a pittance in, you know, it's a drop in the bucket really compared, and literally a tiny drop compared to what's in here. And that, that was from a Buildings and Grounds meeting that I was at in, I'll say it was November, that we had that discussion about state aid and what, you know?
Okay.
What's what with that? So, it was kinda like one of those, it's almost not worth filling out the paperwork and jumping through the hoops and everything else for it, but we still have to meet code, we still have to meet...
Thank you.
To touch on your question or your statement about Plan A, Plan B, there actually have been because, you know, we've been following this personally for quite a long time. The original plan was a full package, everything, and it was much higher, they scaled that back, they realized that was still too much, they broke it into three sections. I think they've gone pretty far to present multiple plans to the voters.
No, I meant Plan A, Plan B, two, the voters, let the voters choose one or the other.
They did.
No, no, here.
They said, yeah, Plan A, the original, they realized that the full package is too much, Plan A is just the renovation.
We only have Plan A. It's either 18 million dollars or nothing, or nothing. There is no Plan B.
And all the design and...
It's not a...
Okay.
Virgil, let him finish speaking.
I don't want to sell him, but you haven't worked with an architect or such, you haven't gone out, you haven't reviewed, you haven't presented, so it's hard for you to say you can do this for 10 million?
I've worked with many architects.
I understand.
Many.
That's very good, but that, there's not...
I've got 2 million dollar jobs.
Present it.
The other thing too is the school was designed with no, with no monies. There were no limitations set on what, what they thought that they felt could be spent. So, the architects, just, you know, they created a wish list, oh, this grand plan was drawn up and then, you know, we never got the numbers until just recently, so...
Well, actually, can I, you mentioned the word wish list and actually, it didn't, it started with a curriculum committee that actually sat down and said, "This is what we need to have, you know, what's, what's favorable in a school as far as the school environment, whether it's air quality, lighting, what is it that we need for a good work, for a good learning environment for the students?" And that's one of the things that we looked at first. We took that, the, and this was actually two years ago, this was before I was a board member, when I was first a Buildings and Grounds Committee member, there was this curriculum committee that, that worked on this, my husband was a part of that committee. They looked at all these things, they went through surveys, they went to other schools, they did other site visits, just to see what the schools had done that had recently done renovations. A really good example, I don't know if you've seen Kingswood, if you've had a chance to walk through it, I got to walk through it. It was this, early this fall and what they've done, and they were still in process of doing it, but some of the changes they've done there were really impressive, but the lighting, the air quality, just things like that, that were just really different. I'd been in there once before and it was just very 60s looking inside. They really, it was really a light bright, but it also accommodated a modern education. You know, one of the things that we have a problem with now is we don't have enough data, data drops in, in a room. You know, we don't have enough electrical outlets, just simple, really simple things. But these are things that, you know, for us to pay an electrician to come in and put that stuff in now, you know, you're dealing with firewalls, you're dealing with all kinds of stuff, you know, you're looking at more expense. You know, we do have things that we can do if this gets voted down, you know, if this gets voted down, we do have, we do have ways that we can, you know, keep up with things, keep up with the roof, whatever. But we don't wanna do a lot because we would rather do a renovation, it would be more cost-effective in the long run. The product, the finished product would be something we could be proud of in this, this town. You know, I know that a lot of was put off with the school for a while and I've, I've watched the board for several years put things off in anticipation of upcoming projects. I'm talking big changes, you know? The things that we have changed, windows, bathrooms, all that look wonderful. I mean, nice, very nice difference and I, I know you've gotten some feedback about that, but, you know, the thing is, is that these, we haven't touched certain areas because we would like to save that for when we renovate, so we do the most cost-effective. You know, material, the price of materials is not going down, it's going up. You know, a project like this could help create jobs in this area. You know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of factors in here. It's not a huge tax impact for the most part. I look at it and I say, "Am I willing to pay this for an improvement to the school?" Yeah, I am. Are times tight in my household, like Barbara's? Yeah, I'm self-employed too. I get it, I totally get it. But you do the best you can, you know? It's, it's, it's what we see as feasible.
Do I have a question? Did the curriculum team that looked into, went around and taught all these schools, was there ever any question of whether or not a new school actually improved education or improved their test scores? Did you look into it? A correlation?
There's quite a bit of data on that and it does, it does help with that because, you know, it helps with several things, I mean, morale, things like that. But you're not, you have students who aren't distracted by the temperatures in the room, you have students who aren't distracted by, you know, ever try to find a bathroom in Alton Central?
But there's concrete proof that it improves test scores.
There is, and I can get you more data on that, there's, there's actually quite a few articles out there on that. Lighting, natural lighting is a big deal, especially in the winter. And if you're dealing with some children, as you may know, you know, if you've got children of any, you know, I've, I've got a child who's special needs and on a dark rainy day, it's a lot different for him than it is on a sunny day as far as his attention span and things like that. You know, that makes a difference for, for a child. And if you can, if you can have that natural lighting in a room, if you can have, you know, the room set up in an optimal way where, you know, the computers aren't a distraction to certain students, you know, you have more, more places to plug in, more ways you can reconfigure your classroom, it's certainly a plus for, you know, it's certainly a win-win situation for not just the teacher, but the students as well. It's, it's a health and well-being issue and it's all tied into learning, cause you know how much, just the littlest thing can affect a child, so...
The first night that this was presented to us, Kathy Holtz came in and said, "We just worked on this and here's the plans." And she said, "The architect hasn't worked on this yet, he doesn't know it will, if it will work or not."
I believe that was a misunderstanding, the...
She didn't say that?
No.
She did.
What the...
They brought those in?
No, the architect actually did look at that, that prior. When she came in, she came in with the, this was when they first looked at it and they realized it was the 27 million, too big, what can we do? What they were reviewing at that time was pulling the gym out, rearranging the interior configuration. And that was done with the architect, with the Building and Grounds Committee. My understanding was that it was not completely signed off, but she had the meeting with us, it had happened the night prior, the architect was working on it that next day still. She came in to let us know how they were trying to adapt to the overage that they knew would not get through the budget and present what they were going to be going forward with. It was not done by, you know, the school board, Building and Grounds Committee sitting down and thinking, "How can we change this?"
But that's what she said that night.
Might, might wanna go back through and just listen to it again. I believe it was a misunderstanding, cause that's not how I interpreted it.
I don't interpret it, was it, was nothing was proved.
Where could I, where can I, where can I see the ed specs?
That is...
The SAU office? The whole big book of ed specs? Yeah, we have that book at the SAU office.
I've got it electronically, but I don't know if you...
Chip has them in his office as well.
The other thing with this is, you might wanna print something that the bond at the high school be paid off before you take this out.
And that's something I'd like to do.
So, people don't confuse the two, saying, "We've got a bond there."
One of the problems we have...
We're gonna have to borrow another one.
Yeah, and one of the problems we have with going through anything like this with DRA is, you know, they don't like that kind of information and, and you've seen it on the town level, I've heard it for years as meeting recorder and all that. You know, it'd be nice to put that in there to just say, "This is not gonna be, you know, this isn't gonna be the impact that you think it might be."
This will start when the other one's paid or something.
Right, impact for a year, things are gonna go down, you know, altogether and then the next year, cause the first year, there's no payment that comes out from this.
Yeah, that's, it's a small amount.
So, you know, I mean, I, I know that the board in the past, you know, prior to my coming on it, you know, has tried to work to get something through for that school. It's been known even before the roof failed that we, we had some issues in the school that needed to be addressed, whether it was plumbing, electric, electrical or whatever. But knowing what I know now from my involvement on this, you know, it's, you know, there's a lot more issues than I, I would've, I would've guessed just from, you know, walking for room or just knowing that it's an older building, you know, it looked to me when we first moved to town. And we picked Alton because of the school. My, my husband's a public school teacher, that's why we moved here. It had a good reputation for education. And when we moved here, one of the things, walking through it, it just looked like it was patchwork together, you know? It just, you could, you can almost see, you know, in fact, in some places you actually can where something was added on, a wall was taken out, that kind of thing. So, you know, we'd like to have a school that would be, that would draw new families to town, that would be something to be proud of, something, you know? It's not necessarily about enrollment right now, you know? When, when the board had a NESDEC study done in 2006, we were, we were living in different times then, it was a little bit different economy, they were projecting a lot more growth here. We had a lot of subdivisions and things like that on paper that had not gone through. I know that real estate is picking up, I know that construction is starting to pick up, you know, just, just around here in town, just what I'm seeing.
Well, to me, it's, I mean, 2/3 of the tax bill now goes to school.
I think it's quite that way.
It's quite a bit. It's over half of my tax bill goes just to the school.
Part of that is actually broken out...
It's gotta stuck somewhere.
Part of that is actually broken out between the state and the local...
No, the state stays here with the school too. State don't take that money, that's, money stays right here with, in the town.
No, what I'm saying, part of your tax bill actually is, if you look at your bill, there is a...
It'll say state, but that money does not leave the town.
But by the Claremont rule...
Might say state, but it does not leave the town.
Right, but by Claremont rule, we're a donor town, we're not a recipient town. You know, just because of the tax base we've got here, you know, doesn't mean I agree with that. I'd rather see that money stay here, quite frankly. That money for the state doesn't, you know, we, we get back very little from the state really and we get back very little from, from the federal, you know, it's, but there's a lot we have to do, you know, there's a lot, a lot of mandates we have to meet for that.
There's, there's also another issue. One of the charges to the budget committee from the taxpayers is to look out in their, in their best interest. The taxpayers, over the last 10 years that have paid taxes, have been looking forward to some tax relief from the bond. Not to continue having the same or higher taxes, but actual tax relief. And that, and that's really not gonna show up. Now, the very easy argument is to say, "It's a nickel here, it's six cents here, it's 14 cents there." Before you, before you know it, we're talking about real money. For instance, there are people in town that are making decisions every day, "Do I put on my oil heat or do I put another, or do I put wood in my, my fireplace to, to warm myself?" Those are hard decisions, okay? And that, and those decisions are hundreds of dollars. That's a hundreds of dollars decisions. And those people are making that decision on a, on a very, very basic level. And what they don't expect is, while they're, while they're cutting back from oil to wood, for instance, are, "Do I take this prescription and not this prescription this month? What do I, what do I do?" Well, I have to pay more of the same taxes when, "Oh my God, I almost had a couple of hundred extra dollars. Oh my God, I almost had a few extra hundred dollars." For the person, you know, who has, you know, a lot, you know, has significant income, you're absolutely right. Another 2 or 3 or 400, you know, is not that critical, okay? And you might as well give it to the school as anybody else. I, you know, I agree with that 100%. But we still have to look out for the people in town where our welfare contribution is at an all-time high, where the homelessness, the, in, uh, Alton is at an all, is at an all-time high.
It must have one.
And, and there's always, and there's been a significant increase in the requests for charitable contributions that you'll see on the town budget. So, I understand the economics of this. A nickel here, a dime here, 15 cents here, but there are people out there who are absolutely, were looking for relief from this after 10 years, not increasing it another 20, and turning 10 years into 30 years.
If I can interject something?
And I want to clarify, the town port, the state portion of that taxes stays here 100%. There's no more donor town or any of that. 100% of that state tax stays here.
But there's still a Claremont rule where rural towns receive funding. I mean, there was...
But that's not part of our tax bill. That's not part of our tax bill. That, that state portion of that tax bill stays in Alton.
Then where does the state get the money for it?
No, I, I've checked on it two or three different times, and that, 100% of that state portion of our tax bill stays in Alton. So you get the school portion and the state portion.
The other thing, Krista, is, you know, you say it's, it's 11 cents per thousand, it's 12 cents, it's 13 cents, but really, it's on top of what we're already paying. And that's the rest of the statement that always seems to be omitted.
If, well, if I can interject in this, that kind of keys into what Steve said too. But, um, you know, when Prospect Mountain was built, I remember there was a bumper sticker going around town that it takes a high school to ruin a village. And, uh, you know, it's kind of interesting that the, um, the tax rate went down with the building of Prospect Mountain. Assessments went up.
Somebody had a bumper sticker saying that?
Oh yeah, this bumper, this bumper, my next door neighbor has one, yeah.
Freedom of speech.
Yeah, exactly, and I respect that, that's fine, you know. But my point is that, you know, that the Prospect, when Prospect Mountain was built, you know, tax rates went down, assessments went up. You know, that's something to look at, you know, you've, we've got data on it.
I've got tax history, all broken out by town rate, local school rate, state school rate, county rate, and the grand total from 2000 through 2011.
Yeah, but my, my taxes didn't go down. The tax rate might've went down, but my taxes didn't go down. The assessment went up, but my taxes stayed the same and kept going up.
But your assessment...
So they didn't go down. The tax rate went down, yes, but my taxes didn't go down.
Right.
And your budget for the school didn't go down.
Are we ready to vote?
It's gone.
Ready to vote?
Yep.
Are you speaking to the mic? Mark DeKoff, no.
Steve Moller, no.
Lawrence Tilly, yes.
Virgil McDonald, no.
Barbara Howan, no.
Lauren Cadd, no.
Krista Adropas, yes.
Two yeses, five nos. Or six nos, right? No, five nos. Article four. Got a motion?
I make a motion, we accept Article four as written.
Second for discussion. Any discussion?
Have we thought about solar too with the geothermal?
We've thought about solar, yeah, that's, that's something we've looked at. I mean, there's, you know, there's other alternatives too, you know, we've looked at wind power too over at the high school, I know you've heard about the study on that. We've, we've looked at solar, but one of the problems we've got is we don't have a whole lot of space for it, um, to, to do an adequate solar panel there. You'd need, I mean, you need more than the roof space for just that, to do an adequate solar panel, to make it worth the while and to make it worth the payoff. So, I don't have data on that. It's just stuff we've talked about, and what we've got for land there, we don't have a lot to work with. We're actually under the state requirement by just a little bit on what we've got for land right at this time. It's supposed to be, um, 10 acres for every 500 students, and then an extra acre for every 100 students after, after that, so...
That's an administrative suggestion, it's not a legal requirement. Please clarify.
That's right.
That is a state requ, that is, actually, that's a, that's a state requirement as far as I'm trying to...
Oh, I don't remember.
That is, and that's out of the NESDEX study that I'm referring to from 2006. I can get you a copy of it.
So the Conkett schools that they've fixed and everything else, they're all illegal?
They're not illegal, they do waive...
I believe their grandfather, they're waived...
Their grandfather, they're waived in, we've got a waiver.
Solar's not very economical for up here either. We've done, uh, some look at it for our home, and, uh, there's a lot of data that's provided through EPA and some other sites. And regionally speaking, we don't have this, you know, the number of daylight hours that make it economical.
Virgin Chip looked at, um, solar and the payback's not the same.
A question that's, um, that's just popped up, and it's strictly hearsay, um, is that over at the High, Kingswood High School, which has geothermal, uh, due to the, um, initial bills that the, they turn the heating off at 2 o'clock every day?
Does it cost too much?
Does it cost too, and so my, my, my question is, do you know anything about that? Do you know anything about, you know, what happens in the summer for the five or 10 days? Do you need it? Do they really forego it? When they look at it a cost-per-day basis, do they not put on the air conditioner?
That I, you know what, that I don't know, but in thinking about, you know, the comments that were made the other night about air conditioning and heating and all that, you know, one of the things that you could look at with this, with being able to cool the school, is that it would certainly kill the argument for not being able to have a longer school year, you know. I mean, it would kind of knock that down, because it's a lot cheaper to heat a school than it is to cool a school, as you may know. But, you know, we could look at actually doing an extended school year program versus the, the traditional one that we've done now with the big summer break and all that kind of thing. Um, you know, we, we could, we could actually do a lot more with that kind of thing. You know, it's not necessarily that we're wanting to turn it into Club Med or anything like that by air conditioning it, but, you know, if it's more comfortable for conducive learning, you know, it gets above 90 degrees, and I don't know, it's, it's, uh, you know, it can get a little uncomfortable, so, you know, I mean, to do something like that is certainly feasible, and, and, you know, I don't know. Just throwing that out there.
My personal feeling is that if, if, if the project is adopted, the 18 million dollar project is adopted, then it makes sense to have the geothermal, because the spreadsheet numbers looked good, even with the, um, you know, the inherent cost of the bond fixed in, you know, it still comes out, you know, as a positive return.
Yeah.
So that's why I will probably vote for this article, even though I voted against the project itself, because I, I still think, the people vote, and I go along whatever the voters vote, you know, and with no tears.
Right. And, you know, one of the things that I noticed the other night, you know, when Chip gave you the spreadsheet and everything, you seemed pleased with the numbers, and I was too. I hadn't seen quite all that data yet, you know, it was, uh, it was quite a, you know...
It's a relatively short time to pay it.
It, it really is, and, you know, I, I know that there's a lot of reservations about this just because it's a fairly new way of heating and cooling, you know, it's something very different, but you can't deny that, you know, there's some, it gives us some flexibility for what we can do in the building too. Um, I think it would make the building more user-friendly, if you will, for the entire community, not just for the, for the students, you know. There was discussion the other night with the gym and everything about that being more of a town thing and stuff like that too. This could also help enhance that as well, so something to consider.
I'd just like to point out that Chip did admit, um, that he didn't really know how to estimate the electrical. I think that's an unknown still. We haven't really gotten expert information on the increase to the electric, and also, don't forget, he's gonna benefit by this project, so of course he's gonna push numbers that are gonna look good. Call me a skeptic.
He provided, uh, three cases, and even the worst case still paid for the unit before the bond was over.
Well, it's still relatively new, and I look at it as a want item, not an absolute need item.
They turned the power off too, so that they can change over the service, so they can work on the school. It's not that they're, they need the electric.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No?
No, okay, I might have another question for you later.
No, I was impressed with the numbers on this.
Essence of the electrician...
I think if you're gonna put this building...
That's great, okay.
Better than a crispy electrician.
Are you ready to take the vote?
Uh huh.
Mark DeKoff, yes.
Steve Moller, yes.
Lawrence Tilly, yes.
Virgil McDonald, yes.
Barbara Howan, no.
Lauren Cadd, yes.
Krista Adropas, yes.
Six yeses, one no. Article five. Any motion?
Make a, uh, make a motion, we accept it as read.
Seconded.
Okay, I really have, I, you've heard, um, my position so far, and just to reiterate, we're looking at approximately 15,000 square feet in terms of, uh, gym space. What's actually, absolutely usable is some larger percentage of that number. But that, that being said, I don't think there is a place for two gyms. I think there's a place for one gym. I think the fact that there are community activities that may or may not make it difficult for the kids to participate at the gym, that's a, that's for school management to determine, and, and they set the priorities. If they don't want the kids in the gym, then give it to the community. That being said also, I honestly believe that it's the town's function to provide either a gym, or a social hall, or a community house, you know, for, uh, for the adults and for the people. It is not for, it, it's, the schoolchildren should not, uh, pay the burden for the parents. I think it still should be, it still should be the other way around. And I can see no justification in having 15,000 square feet of gym space, two gyms. And I understand that, that, you know, it expands the cafeteria, we've got more room to eat, et cetera, but there had to be a better idea than just to build another gym.
Well, this was put on the Warren article because it came forward by a petition Warren article. This would've been on there whether the board had adopted it or not. Um, we had a petition presented to us at our last board meeting, and there were, I believe, 56 signers to the petition. They did this in response to the Buildings and Grounds Committee removing the gym from the original plan that was presented. Um, the Buildings and Grounds Committee did it with the justification that they were trying to keep the expense low, so that the overall bond would be, you know, the payment and everything would be more palatable to, um, to the, the taxpayers. So, the board adopted this in good faith, um, just because of the, the petition Warren article that was brought forward to us. It was something we had been asked to consider by a few commi, community members, and as you said earlier, you know, you, you do what the voters ask you to do. You know, I don't know if you're aware, but this room you're meeting in now, the upstairs of it, used to be the gym for the town, as a, as a basketball court. It's all sectioned off, and it's all storage now. But there was more community centers and things like that here. Was it this room too, Lauren? I've just seen part of that. I've never been all the way up through into the bell tower, but there was more years ago.
That's where we used to play when we were kids.
Yep, and I know town meeting used to happen in this, you know, in this area, there was a balcony, and that's where all this wall is now. But, you know, years ago, there was actually more in town than there is now.
There is a public basketball court too, down by the fire station.
Yeah, but that's, but that, that basketball court, and, and, yeah, we've gone down there to play and stuff, but there's, um, that's seasonal, of course, you know, we're talking about a gymnasium that can be used year-round. Basketball season is in the winter, you know, if, if you're playing the sport, so, you know, I, I understand that the, the community's, uh, interested in this, and that's why it's on here.
That, that's why I have a real concern. It was gonna be brought by a private citizen, no matter what, who had the, the proper amount of signatures, so it was gonna absolutely be on the ballot. When you voted, the school board voted unanimously to adopt it yourselves, as opposed to letting it come from the community, what you're saying is, every single one of you, you know, decided a second gym makes sense. That's what you decided, because it was gonna come anyway. They did, the petitioner didn't need your help to bring the special Warren article and put it on here, okay? So, I don't, I don't see the need for it, and I, to this, to this moment, even after you explaining it, I still don't see how it is so important that you're, you're willing to vote for a second gymnasium as a school board member, that you have to have it. You're a school, you're a school board member.
She's more of a sports person than I am.
I would vote for two gyms personally, because, first of all, when they're doing the building, as you all know, when you have somebody there and they're doing the renovations, it'd be much better to take and do the extra right there, so it doesn't cost twice as much. You have the area to do it. And secondly, if you're gonna ask the town to do it, is it coming out of my right pocket or my left pocket? It's the same money. I mean, we're in the middle of a renovation, I, I just think it's the perfect time to do it. The gym there has some issues, it was made a long time ago. It doesn't meet the specs that are needed to be met. Also, with the new gym, there'll be more flexibility to do the lunchtimes. I don't know if you've ever gone to Alton Central at lunchtime? If you're way at the back of the line, you got about five minutes to eat, and this way we'll be able to set up, we'll have more room in the cafeteria, we'll have more room for the kitchen to get out more meals, or more quicker, and then we can also change the times. I think we have four lunch periods now, so you've got some kids that are eating at 10 o'clock in the morning, which is basically right when they get in. And then 12:45 is the last lunch.
But why wouldn't you, for instance, instead of just keeping the old gym, adding a new gym, if caf, if the cafeteria is the significant problem, then add 500 to 1,000 or 1,500 square feet just to that?
But the problem is, the building, the present building that we have is really not conducive to a lot of the changes that we're talking about.
At 18 million, it's conducive to a lot of changes.
That's what's gonna take place, yes.
I've got a question. Could have the, uh, could the gym be added without everything else being done? Because it's gonna be separate.
You mean just the gym?
Just the gym.
I suppose if they voted for...
It could have, so, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. So if that petition Warren article had come from the petitioner, it probably wouldn't have said this article is contingent upon, upon the approval of Article III?
No, it was gonna be written exactly the same way.
The petitioner is here.
Yes.
It was gonna be written exactly the same way.
Okay.
Do you want the petitioner to speak?
No, 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 he just did. He said yes. I'm just saying, because you could've done just the gym.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you would've alleviated your problem with your cafeteria.
Uh, yes or no?
You wouldn't have been using it as a gym anymore.
No, that, but then there's still, I mean, the whole, it's the whole package, I mean, that's why you look at it as a whole package. It's not one or the other. If you would've done the gym, yes, we'd probably get on something there, but there's still the classroom space and the, the modules. I mean, you know, it's not, you can't just say, do this piece and everything's okay. It's, that's why it's done the way it's done.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that this was broken out separate, because this is probably the one part of the whole project that we're personally very back and forth on, and, you know, I'll be honest with you, $20 a month makes a huge impact on our personal budget, so this is something we're having to really strongly consider. But at the same time, you know, we know children who are having to start their lunch when you would normally be doing snack time for a child, not lunchtime. That has a strong impact on that child's afternoon, because their body's chemistry is not right for, you know, 2 o'clock in the afternoon. But at the same time, you know, it seems to be this focus coming on as this is a second gym. You know, the freeing up that space is, is, as a second gym, is for after-hours and weekends. During the weekdays, you know, you have a gym and you have a cafeteria, and that cafeteria is primarily for cafeteria duties. You're not supporting the public, you're not supporting the adults, you're not supporting, you know, anybody else during school hours, and that's where this really is needed. The fact that you could benefit by it extra is not, you know, the yes or no on the whole project.
My issue was, is that an architect generally gets, I don't know if he's being paid, but an architect gets about 8% of the deal, of the total amount, okay? Eight, figure 8% of 18 million dollars, it's a million four or something like that. If you're paying an architect a million four, he, and you tell him, these are my constraints, you come up with something, okay? And the answer would not be, well, two gyms.
It's not two gyms. It's, you have a gym, and you've...
And you're adding, yeah.
No, you've, they've added a gym, they've taken the cafeteria, they've expanded the kitchen cooking space, they've expanded the cafeteria space to support normal lunch hours for the population.
I'm saying that you can't, you can't use... It should've been another, a better, more, in my estimation, as a layman, a better, more efficient plan, okay, than adding a $2 million gym.
That's the whole problem with the schools, they're not planning. You can't use a kid eating at 10 o'clock, saying, well, that's why we need it. You cannot do that. Do like the rest of the schools do, and put, have the school board do it the right thing, and put a bowl of fruit or something out at the classroom doors like New Durham does, like Allawolf Kingswood does, so when they go to recess, or they have a snack time right in that classroom if them kids are hungry. And there's a bowl of fruit that sits right outside every classroom door. You can't say, well, we, we're feeding kids at 10 o'clock in the morning, so, in the afternoon, they're not right.
Hi, hi. That's enough. Are we ready to take the vote?
And that's up for the school board to make a policy.
All right. Can I ask a question? How was, was the issue gonna be solved if you didn't do the gym? About the lunch, lunch and the whole problem?
It, it's not some, from what I understand...
It's up to the school board to make the policies.
Can I finish? You know, it's, I, I've got two kids that go to that school, and they pack snacks with them every day. They eat their lunch at one time, they have a snack at another time. My oldest has the first lunch of the day, I think it's, what is it, 10, 45, whatever. He has an afternoon snack, my youngest has the late one, and he has the morning snack. You know, it's, it's, it's not, it's, that part's really not an issue. It's more about when the big meal of the day happens, or whatever, you know, and with little kids, you know, they eat slower, so, you know, you deal with it. That's probably why my youngest has, has the last one. But it's more of an issue with the cafeteria now, the way it is, it's a crowding issue. There's four lunches, you know, for the pre, it's, um, first grade through eight in there. It's very noisy. If you go in there during lunch, if you've ever gone in and had lunch with kids...
It's gonna be noisy, no matter if you put them in a new cafeteria.
Well, the thing is, is this classroom, can I finish? There's classrooms nearby, things like that, they have to shut off the lights, quiet it down, you know, things like that, get the kids' attention. So, you know, it, it's a matter of spacing it out better, it's a matter of having better facilities for not just food service, but also for physical fitness, and, you know, it's something that can be used by the school, it's something that can be used by, by the town, you know, that's certainly an option. So, that's what we're looking at. It's used for assemblies, it's used for a lot of things, so, you know, graduations, what have you. You know, it'd be nice to be able to go back and vote there. You know, we get a lot of complaints about voting at Prospect. People don't like going there because of the walk, especially older people are handicapped, you know, they have to park right there in front, and it's still a decent walk, and they have to go down that ramp to go, to go vote, you know, in the auditorium. It'd be nice to bring the voting back to Alton Central and things like that, and just, it's centrally located, it's.
You could bring it back and just put it back in a gymnasium.
You could, it would just be.
She hasn't answered my question yet. How are you going to solve the problem, the lunch schedule problem, if you didn't have the gym, this newer gym?
The new gym, you're looking at the plan, am I looking at, Lauren? And this does have a slight variation to the cafeteria. What it does is it takes out two classrooms, and it expands the cafeteria area, so that there are more space allowed for those luncheons. That's why, lunchtimes, that's why the third floor needed to be constructed, three more classrooms, because of the displacement of the classrooms in the cafeteria area without